These are the days that I've been missing. Give me the taste, give me the joy of summer wine. These are the days that bring you meaning. I feel the stillness of the sun and I feel fine. Sometimes when the nights are closing early. I remember you and I start to smile. Even though now you don't want to know me. I get on by and I go the extra mile. These are the signs of love and meaning. Eyes of the heart melted away and found the light. These are the days of endless dreaming. Troubles of life floating away like a bird in flight. These are the days. These are the days. These are the days. Hey! Oh! I thought you said our love would last forever. Leaving that the tears would end for good. I told you that we'd get through any weather. Maybe that didn't work out, but we did the best we could. These are the days that I've been missing. Give me the taste, give me the joy of summer wine. These are the days that bring you meaning.
Opportunities for outdoor recreation abound in Alexandria and within a radius of just a few miles. All the hunting seasons are well attended by our residents. Your favorite game animal is just a short drive away. The Red River has become a haven for fishermen, looking for a variety of different game fish. Put in at one of our launches near downtown and you're right in the middle of some of the state's most sought-after fishing spots. If you prefer eighteen holes to fishing holes, try Lynx on the Bayou, just a short drive out Highway 28 West. Lynx is widely considered to be one of the finest municipal courses in the state. A longtime local favorite is Brinhurst Golf Course next to the Alexandria Zoo. The Brink is thought to be the oldest par-three course in the United States and has long nurtured local golfers during their junior playing days.[338.12][338.12](music) Forecasters expect the Alexandria-Pineville area to be Louisiana's second-fastest-growing region over the next couple of years. Its business-friendly attitude and family-focused lifestyle make it the ideal setting for a thriving economy. An economic centerpiece of our proud history and promising future is England Air Park. A former U.S. Air Force Base, England Air Park is widely considered around the country to be a prime example of how to successfully deal with military base closure. Through the cooperation of local business and government entities, including the Alexandria City Council, England Air Force Base was reborn in the 1990s as England Air Park, home to an impressive roster of regional and national companies. Development projects totaling more than $200 million in private business construction and renovation are underway in our area, in addition to improvements in roads, water systems, air, and rail transportation. Union Tank Car Company, Procter &amp; Gamble, Plastipack, and Startech are among the notable businesses that have recently located, expanded their facilities, or announced plans to locate
Coming up on this edition of Louisiana Revenues: Big Changes in Louisiana's Tax Loss. We'll take a look at what's new and how some of the changes can help keep money in your pockets. Also...
This is where you'll go to get to the LaTAP link.
Tracking your company's tax records online anytime from any place. We'll show you how easy it is with the LaTAP program. And we'll explain why the growing gaming business in North Louisiana has the Shreveport Regional Office working at a feverish pitch. These stories and much more are just ahead on this edition of Louisiana Revenues.[501.62][501.62](music) I'm Cynthia Bridges, Secretary of the Louisiana Department of Revenue, and this is Louisiana Revenues. Our top story: The 2007 Louisiana Legislature made quite a few significant changes to the state tax system, many of which directly affect residents who pay state income tax. Let's take a look at some of the major changes that could affect you. The deduction of federal itemized deductions that exceed the federal standard deduction is coming back. Five years ago, this deduction was eliminated by the legislature as part of the Stelly Plan. But as Michael Pearson, Senior Policy Consultant for the Louisiana Department of Revenue, explains, there's been a change of heart.
What they did was put us back where we were in 2003. At that point, they had been phasing back in. There had been a temporary reduction back in the early 2000s, and then Stelly Plan eliminated it, and this plan's putting us back on track for the phase-in of the excess itemized deductions.
The change in the excess itemized deduction could mean some significant savings for some taxpayers. But exactly who will benefit from this new phased-in plan?
If you do itemize for federal purposes, then for Louisiana purposes, you can take that difference between the federal standard deduction and those federal itemized deductions and deduct that on your Louisiana return.
Here's how the phased-in excess itemized deduction will work. For this tax year, 2007, a deduction of 57.5% of excess itemized deductions is allowed. In 2008, that increases to 65%, and beginning in 2009, the deduction is 100% of excess itemized deductions. Another major change to our state's tax laws will benefit low-to-middle-income residents. It's the new state-earned income tax credit. Following the successful federal-earned income credit, the state's version allows taxpayers who earn a certain income to be refunded up to 3.5% of the federal-earned income tax credit. State officials implemented this new state tax credit for those who need help the most.
It's to encourage people to work. In the past, there have been problems with people being able to work, but wages they could earn would not cover childcare expenses, and they ended up in the hole by working, which did not seem like a very fair thing to have if you want to encourage people to enter and then work their way up the ladder.
If you qualify for the federal-earned income tax credit, then you qualify for the new state-earned income tax credit. But how do you know if you are eligible?
Essentially, if you're earning less than $40,000 a year, you probably ought to look at the federal-earned income credit to see if you're eligible. And the income level is higher if you're married, filing joint, and have more children. If you're single with no children, of course, the income level at which you're eligible is lower.
The new state-earned income tax credit can be claimed beginning in the 2008 tax year, meaning you can file for the credit anytime after January 1st, 2009. There are more sales tax holidays coming next year. Beginning in 2008, the last weekend of May, the Saturday and Sunday of Memorial Day weekend, shoppers can take advantage of no state sales tax on the first $1,500 spent on hurricane-preparedness items. State officials proclaim the new state tax holidays in an effort to encourage Louisiana residents to ready themselves each year for the annual start of the hurricane season, which is June 1st. And the first consecutive Friday and Saturday of August will continue to be state sales tax holidays. Residents will be exempt from paying sales tax for the first $2,500 in personal purchases of almost any items. The two-day sales tax holiday will be an annual statewide event, so start making your shopping list now. You will also get a break on sales tax anytime of the year when you purchase any kind of storm shutters for your home. The exemption, effective now, was issued to encourage homeowners to protect their property from future severe weather damage. Coming up when Louisiana revenues continues...
Which has a drop-down menu on which tax type?
What does LaTAP mean? We'll spell it out for you and show you how it could help you run your business much more efficiently and accurately.
Could you explain the difference between...
And getting answers to your questions on tax issues. We bring our cameras to the streets around Louisiana and hear what's on your mind. And as slot machines ring and blink in northern Louisiana casinos, so does the Shreveport Regional Tax Office. We'll introduce you to a group of state workers busily keeping up with the ever-changing gaming industry. You are watching Louisiana Revenues. Stay tuned, we'll be right back.
Attention property owners, if you have insurance on immovable property in Louisiana and were assessed a special fee to support Louisiana citizens the state's insure, you're entitled to a tax credit. Governor Blanco and the Louisiana Legislature have made it possible for citizens and corporations who paid the fee to get a special assessment credit on their 2007 tax return. Just check the declarations page on your policy and enter the amount you paid on line nine of your state return. For more information, go to the Louisiana Department of Revenue website at www.revenue.louisiana.gov.
Looking for new ways to manage your tax accounts? Introducing LaTAP, Louisiana Taxpayer Access Point, which allows big...
I'd like Mr. Smith and the pledge by Ms. Johnson.
I, Hes, our heavenly Father, we come before you this afternoon and want you to continue blessing and keeping and leading guide us in this world. Again, I want to thank you for being so good, being so kind. Thank you for walking us today. Thank you for our health and strength. Our heavenly Father, I want to bless the ones that are in the hospital, around the hall, the tab, and some more, and special blessings on Marsha Bird, our heavenly Father. Get them the wisdom and the knowledge, our heavenly Father, to deal with whatever sickness they have. Bless this meeting, give us the wisdom and knowledge, carry on this meeting the way that you see fit. That's in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
(inaudible)
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 Mr. Lawson.
(inaudible)
Mr. Fowler.
(inaudible)
Mr. Johnson.
(inaudible)
Mr. Smith.
(inaudible)
Mr. Silver.
(inaudible)
Mr. Hobbs.
(inaudible)
Mr. Marsh.
(inaudible)
Mr. President, you have a call.
Let's look at the consent calendar.
I move.
Move by Mr. Lawson, second by Mr. Fowler.
We can move that number nine if you want to.
All in favor? Close. Motion carries. I'll move to item F. Ordinance for final adoption, subject to public hearing.
Number 12, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bid submitted for Louisiana Highway 28 West, street lighting additions.
Move for rejection. Move, second for rejection. Move by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Hobbs. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Number 30. To consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bid submitted for janitorial supplies for a six-month period.
Move. Second. Move by Mr. Hobbs, second by Mr. Fowler. Discussion?
Yes, out of curiosity, gentlemen, janitorial supplies come up every other month. Is that different? Do we...
(inaudible)
Okay, I don't know why. It's been a couple of weeks.
I think you're having a lapse.
All in favor? Close. Motion carries.
Number 14, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bid submitted for janitorial chemicals for a six-month period.
Move by Mr. Lawson, second by Ms. Johnson. Discussion? All in favor? Close. Motion carries.
Number 15, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bid submitted for fire hydrants and related accessories for a six-month period.
Move by Mr. Hobbs, second by Mr. Lawson. Discussion? All in favor? Close. Motion carries.
Number 16, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bid submitted for various sizes of gas pipe.
Move. Move by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Fowler. Discussion? All in favor? Close. Motion carries.
Number 17, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bid submitted for herbicides for a 12-month period.
Move by Mr. Hobbs, second by Mr. Lawson. Discussion?
Yeah. Well, I'd like to ask the mayor, are we trying to fit any of these, all these items that we have with we bidding off chemicals? Are we trying to put them out with our disadvantaged bidding?
Yes, we will be.
Okay. That's all.
Yes, they're on the website.
On the website?
Yes.
Every one of our bids go out on the website.
Yeah, but I'm saying, when we deal with the disadvantaged bidding.
Yes. Any of those that we got contact with, we're sending them down.
Okay. All right. That's all.
Move.
All in favor?
All in favor? Close. Motion carries.
Number 18, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bid submitted for electric substation maintenance painting for the electric distribution department.
Move. Move by Mr. Smith. Move for rejection.
This is, yeah.
Move for rejection.
Administration, yeah, rejection and re-advertise.
I want him ejected.[1224.64][1224.64](laughing)
Second by Mr. Fowler. Discussion? All in favor? Close. Motion carries.
Number 19, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the city to enter into an environmental entry permit and related agreement with Kansas City Southern Railroad Company.
Move by Mr. Lawson, second by Mr. Johnson. Discussion?
Is this, does this have to do with that superphone side, or, I mean, what is this?
Mr. Fowler, this is the Old Ruston Foundry site, seven acres and an adjoining 30-acre tract. The railroad is considering entering into a transaction with the city for. This is simply to allow us to send in our own retained consultants to do our due diligence to see if we would wish to accept the property as a gift they acquire. It does not mean we're accepting the property. This is not the contract to receive the property. This is just so that your engineering staff with Mr. Branch can go out and look at it. We have to sign an agreement with the railroad.
Thank you.
We wouldn't assume the responsibility. That's crazy what they're doing.
No, no, this is just so we can send our people out to the site to even go on the site in the first place. It requires an entry permit.
Go ahead. I have a question after. All in favor? Close. Motion carries.
Kansas City Southern, Mayor, we talked about it, I think it may have been the previous administration, that tract, Mr. Johnson, down the town area, Third Street area, what do we do to level that? It's still a little humpy. There's been a little wall. I always said that was an invisible barrier where a blend of milk and honey flows, and I think everybody up here agrees that we're trying to move southwardly, and I'd like to see us move that. And that's always been the little piece where we kind of proceed, that I'd like to see us get that level and structure that's adjacent to the levels with Mr. Smith. You're in the car, but you're audition. The old depot used to be.
But you're not talking about the abutments they held up the railroad bridge, are you? We want to use those abutments for a gateway to Southwood.
Mr. Lawson, that area you're talking about is within the scope of the McElroy Center I was working on.
Can you come up with great ideas with planning and growth and not gateways? On the ball, isn't it?
Okay. Number 20.
I just want my picture on that gateway to bigger than Charles Prince.[1424.03][1424.03](laughing)
Number 20, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a professional services agreement with the Sandburn Map Company to provide aerial photography and GIS services.
Move by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Silver. Discussion? All in favor? Close. Motion carries.
Number 21, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and to enter into a contract with the International Association of Chiefs of Police to evaluate the structure of the Alexandria Police Department and to conduct a patrol staffing and deployment study.
Move. Move by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Fowler. Discussion?
I think it's great. I wanted a little more now. This is kind of just strategically locating a Red River documentation officer and anything else that would be helping it. My item 21, chief.
Yes, Martin, also, back to you. You've been asking me for a year now. How do we figure out how many officers we should add? How do we get over 10 short? How do we get over 18 short? Whatever. We're going to be addressing all of those things. You compare us to other cities, but that's not always fair because there's a lot of intangibles you can't compare, so.
Good input.
That's part of it. Also, just see if we're short and talk about this administration issue. Those kind of things. Steve, if you have some things to add.
This is not, and we're getting to major budget when we're looking at certain budgets. The other thing that I know is going and discussing with detectives, maybe working on the staggered ships or something, they may not know it. None of you do? Because all crimes don't necessarily occur during the day.
We want to look at controlling staff, and that's critical. What we want to do is evaluate what resources we have and how we can best utilize those. And it's just like everything else, you know, our department grew with the city and everybody that's there sort of grew with the department, and we sort of created things as we grew. And it's time now to go back and have someone that's objective, someone from the outside, come in and look at what we've got there. Is our organizational structure proper? Are we top-heavy? Are we bottom-heavy? Where do we need people? How do we use our resources? What resources do we need that we don't have? And we're looking forward to working with the International Association of Chiefs of Police to design a study that addresses our needs. There are two proposals in your book, and we're going to kind of combine those, picking and choosing the areas that we feel like we need assessed and addressed.
Efficiency.
Correct. I stole the chief's thunder.[1631.03][1631.03](laughing)
Before the chief goes, I want to, the city attorney has just told me, because we
want to make sure that we're informing you, it looks like the fact sheet says the estimated cost is $30,000. Chuck is telling me it could be as high as $75,000, which is not unreasonable for what we're going to do, but as Kay said, there's a hybrid version that we're trying to create. I think they want you to pick one or the other. One's the 30 and one's the 75? And so, we're trying to tell them we don't want to pick one or the other because one or the other doesn't fit our needs. So, we're trying to work out something, but if we need to redo it or anything, just let us know.
Gee, but in this study, are they going to look at whether you need substations across town?
That could be looked at often.
If you want to, Mr. Hobbs, yes.
But if you have the book, you can see where they've got a list of data collection and the scope of the study.
You shouldn't say this doesn't cause anything. Talking about efficiency.
It's an investment.
The data collection is what they would work from, is what I understand, and that would entail them going through all our records and determining how we patrol the city, how we staff the organization. Occasions with law enforcement officers report for duty. When officers do not report for duty, due to time off, vacation, sick leave, availability to show-up rates, directed activities, self-initiated activity, administrative overtime, type and quantity of reported criminal activity, personnel regulations that describe a mountain types of authorized leaves of absences, daily activity reports of officers to determine division of labor, organization charts and descriptions which describe present work assignments and staffing levels, map showing bead assignments and general geography of the area, newer special programs or administrative requirements contemplated.
We're going to need about 30 people just to review all that information.
Well, that's what they do. They'll have to come in here and spend a couple of weeks, and since we're not totally up to speed on our technology, we don't have everything right at their fingertips. And one day, we need to get to that point where we'll have the crime mapping data and all of that on hand, which would enhance our performance, I think. And we're trying to work towards getting that put in place as we speak. But they need all of this information to determine the correct deployment of our patrol and our staffing. And I think they probably indicated here that it would... And I think they probably indicated here that it would take somewhere near three months for them to complete the study. Just doing the patrol and staffing study would, would, uh, they submit a proposal of about eighteen thousand, not including the expenses for the one or two people that would be here to look at our, our information. We'd have to pay their expenses. So, that's why we suggest maybe in the neighborhood of thirty thousand dollars for this initial study. The comprehensive study is around seventy thousand. Comprehensive would go through the entire organization and, as it says, tell us how to police Alexandria in the twenty-first century. Uh, I'm no genius. Uh, I know a lot about law enforcement. I know a lot about how to patrol the streets and do things like that. However, I think it'd be beneficial to the city, to the community, and especially our citizens for them to know that this department is providing all the best services that it possibly can provide. And not every organization has these kind of studies done. We'd be sort of like cutting edge here having this study done. I don't think, I know of any other organization who's ever had IACP come in and, and do a, a deployment study.
Physical fitness, wait.
That can be looked at in the comprehensive study with policies and procedures, and we are looking at that.
Well, chief, I, I know when, when I was on active duty in the military, they used to do it to us every so often, and it showed our best way to do things because it's a fresh set of eyes looking at what you're doing.
Exactly.
And hey, it's a good thing, huh?
Yeah. I, I would add, I asked for this initially several years ago, but also when Mayor's transition team, Mayor Roy's transition team came on board, they recommended that we do something similar to this.
And, and Mr. Lawson, I think was, I think somebody was asking for the same thing when we came on about making sure best practices, was Mr. Marshall just saying.
In the next several weeks or so, I'd like to get just a report from the administration on workforce. I ask for real concern, not only with the city, uh, the challenges we have with workforce, but, uh, with some of the industries in the country that, uh, I'd just like to see what we're doing to probably help assist, uh, with some of the gaps that we experience here in Southern California.
Like some of it, but.
All in, all in favor? Both? Motion carries.
Number twenty-two, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the Alexandria Police Department to receive money from the Louisiana Commission on Law Enforcement through Red Whip River Delta to apply for equipment to be used for the Alexandria Training Academy.
Motion. Second. Motion by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Johnson. Discussion?
From thirty thousand to eighty thousand?
We need, we, we need to back up to twenty-one.
It says the estimated cost is thirty thousand.
Not to exceed thirty-five, seventy-five.
Seventy-five thousand.
On twenty-one.
On number twenty-one?
Yeah.
Not to exceed sev-
Seventy-five thousand.
Seventy-five thousand, okay. Need a motion.
Mr. Lawson, Mr. Smith, all in favor?
To be negotiated. Moving, ready?
Only amendment.
Second.
Twenty-two.
Let's go to twenty-two. This is bad.
Did we vote on?
I hear we voted.
We both.
But on the original motion as amendment, that's what he just.
Now, we go back and vote on the original again.
As a amendment.
As a amendment. And Mr. Lawson, move by Mr. Lawson, second by Mr. Fowler, all in favor? Both? Motion carries.
Okay, number twenty-two. It was moved by Mr. Fowler, seconded by Mr. Johnson.
Okay.
Any discussion?
Any discussion? All in favor? Both? Motion carries. Twenty-three.
To consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low quote received for caustic soda for use by the Electric Production Department.
Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Fowler.
I think the mayor's been gargling with that stuff.
Glad to do it, huh?
Discussion? All in care, uh, motion, all in favor? Both? Motion carries.
Number twenty-four, to consider final adoption of an ordinance revoking fifty-four point zero feet of a fifteen-foot wide drainage servitude located adjacent to Lot one forty-nine of Burnwood Subdivision and McAdams Ditch in a tract of land now or formerly owned by Terry's Secure Storage.
Motion by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Johnson. Mo, uh, discussion? All in favor? Both? Motion carries.
Number twenty-five, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing acceptance of the subdivision plat for Bocart Subdivision Phase Four, lots one seventy-nine through two oh two.
Move. Move by Mr. Fowler, second. Second by Mr. Smith. Discussion? All in favor? Both? Motion carries.
Number twenty-six, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing annexation of four point nine eight acres located in Section eighty-six and being located adjacent to Bocart Subdivision Phase Three.
Move by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Silver. Discussion? All in favor? Both? Motion carries.
Number twenty-seven, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a written cooperative endeavor agreement with the interdenominational area-wide crusade to support community events to be held January eighteenth through the twenty-first of oh eight for the purpose of recognizing the National Holiday MLK Day of Service.
Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Johnson. Discussion? All in favor? Both? Motion carries.
Number twenty-eight, is to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the City of Alexandria to enter into a private sale of seven acres, more or less, to port access acquisition, and to authorize the mayor to execute any instruments related thereto pursuant to thirty-three colon forty-seven twelve and thirty-three forty-seven seventeen point two, and to provide for related matters.
A move, Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Lawson. Discussion? All in favor? Both? Motion carries.
Number twenty-nine, to consider final adoption of an ordinance amending oh seven oh eight operating budget, adding a community outreach coordinator position in the Community Services Division.
Move by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Johnson. Discussion? All in favor? Both? Motion carries.
Number thirty, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bid submitted for cooling tower repairs for unit one and two, three and four at DG Hunter Generating Station. This, the administration.
Rejected.
The administration requests rejection and re-advertising of this item.
Move. Second. Lawson, second by Mr. Johnson. On a rejection. Uh, discussion? All in favor? Both?
Yes.
Rejected, be it.
Reject and react.
Motion carries.
Number thirty-one, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing change order number four at DG Hunter Generating Station for upgrade to units three and four.
Move by Mr. Hobbs, second by Mr. Johnson. Discussion? All in favor? Both? Motion carries.
Number thirty-two, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to renew the existing contract for overhead electric construction unit pricing for the Electric Distribution Department.
Move by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Hobbs. Discussion? All in favor? Both? Motion carries.
Number thirty-three, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a cable franchise and pole use agreement with Seabridge Acquisitions doing business as sudden, sudden linked communications and to authorize the mayor to negotiate a contract and seek terms favorable to the city that, in his discretion, are necessary.
Are you going to expand that to the special proposal mothers as well?
Aren't you saying you were going to advertise it to the special proposal mothers as well? Amendment, we just, to them.
To, to go out for RFPs. Okay.
Move on.
RFPs.
Second. All in favor? Both? Motion carries on the amendment. Now, on the original.
As a amendment.
As a amendment.
Mr., Mr. President, Mr. Gis just advised me that we would need to do a resolution to authorize the administration to go out for RFPs instead of.
Another resolution? Or make a resolution and we could go out for proposal mothers as well.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
All in favor?
I want to. Recommend we put it on, and boy, can we do it. From Castro.
All in favor? Now, we go back to the re-
To the, the ordinance.
Resolution.
You need to undo the amendment.
It was moved by Mr., moved by Mr. Silver and seconded by Mr. Fowler to adopt a resolution to go out for RFPs. So, we need to vote.
We need to vote on that.
We need to vote that one down. Till we do the, the, the resolution. We need to, we need to rescind.
We need to rescind the amendment and then do the resolution.
Withdraw the amendment.
You want to, what your procedure will want to do is pass the original ordinance as introduced without the amendment, because the amendment is not germane to the object of the ordinance.
Which is, which is item, item number thirty-three.
I withdraw whichever one is the order of the motion and for the, the amendment. And then when you do.
Do make the motion already.
The motion was made by Mr. Lawson and seconded by Mr. Hobbs for the amendment.
Okay, so we redo, move that I rescind my motion.
That's fine.
Just withdraw.
Withdraw, and then you can move on, call the previous question on the ordinance as originally introduced.
Okay, withdraw the motion. I thought we voted on it.
Okay.
So, okay, so we go it on and.
Now, the original.
Original ordinance.
Right.
It's already been moved and seconded.
There was no, there was a motion on the original ordinance by Mr. Fowler. We did not get a second.
Mr. Hobbs?
Didn't have a second. Because someone came in and.
He did a second, second on the third motion.
Yeah. So, we didn't get a second.
Yeah, I need a better. On, on item number three, I remade.
Let's go back to item number one. Okay. All in favor? Both? Motion carries. Now, we do the resolution.
Right. Correct.
Yes.
Resolution affording opportunity.
We have a motion by Mr., wait just a minute, please. We have a motion by Mr. Silver and a second by Mr. Fowler to add the item on the agenda. Then, there was a motion by Mr. Silver, seconded by Mr. Fowler, to adopt the resolution. And you need to vote on the resolution.
We need to vote on the resolution.
No, you need, it takes unanimous consent to bring it up first.
All, okay. unanimous?
If, if there's no opposition, then you can bring it up.
John thirty-three?
No, no, it's, it's something there.
Thirty-three and a half.
This is thirty-four.
We're willing right now, it's a resolution to afford the mayor the opportunity to go forward and request for a vote.
To request for a vote.
And right now, the motion and the second on the floor. We just need to carry motions. So, I'm moving. All in favor?
We got to add it to the agenda.
We did. Now, we have to vote on. Let's vote on it.
All in favor?
We got it.
We got it.
Silver and Fowler.
We're there.
We're there. It's a done deal.
Now, you got to vote on.
We just add it to this agenda.
That's what I asked you to do.
Just, just, just leave it.
Let's go.
Are we finished? Are you ready for committees?
Okay. Committees?
Finance Committee, Mr. Lawson.
Just announce, uh, we have, uh, MBA major budget, uh, one week from today. What time do we set?
It'd be introduced.
Yeah. So, I might have to, uh, we, uh, set, uh, major budget for, as I was asking. The date is the, uh, the fifteenth?
Correct. It's coming.
To be set at three o'clock.
I move. Second. Move by Mr. Lawson, second by Mr. Smith.
Are we? Are we introducing major budget? What, what do we do?
I'm announcing.
Mr. Lawson, the, the fact sheet has been received by the clerk's office, and it will be on the next council agenda, which is next Tuesday, for introduction for the major budget amendment.
The next council meeting will put us in sync to where we already, this is a hall of council.
That's correct.
Right. So, maybe every Tuesday it's starting.
Right. That's correct. Public Works Committee, Mr. Silver.
Just, just to make sure, understand, a week from tonight, we will have a public hearing concerning the older lane on the twenty-fourth, uh, Jackson Street. Not tonight, a week from tonight was misrepresenting the paper.
We're going to take a straw vote tonight.
Legal Committee, Mr. Hobbs.
Authorizing expenditure funds for Mardi Gras parade expenses related to certain university bands and marching units and to authorize related expenses.
All in favor?
To reflect, I'm abstaining.
No, I'm staying too.
You already voted. You can't say it back.
I can't take it back. Mr. Lawson and Mr. Johnson.
Yes, I'm staying.
Yes, sir.
I'm turning you in tomorrow.
Utility Committee, Mr. Johnson.
I like that administration, um, can we, you know, since this is coming into the new year, can we look at, you know, at the TIF? I know we got some new legislative delegation down, but I would like to, you know, sort of get back to where we're planning to go, how, you know, what we're.
What TIF?
You know, the TIF that we had discussed once before, but we never did go anywhere with it. Kind of put it back on the table again.
Transportation program.
No, 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 no. No, 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 it's down. Tech, tech, increment finance. Yeah, 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 it was about the limit, but I, I, we never, we, 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 we kind of threw it out there back, but we never did say whether we were going to do it at a certain place or we were going to do the whole down. Or were we going to do it, or if we were not going to do it, you know, and I think everyone up here, we, we sort of don't know where we are with it, but I know we knew we had, uh, you know, new delegation going down to Baton Rouge, so kind of.
Are you talking about the, the thing that the council had the resolution regarding? Last year, we had a resolution about?
Yeah, but then I thought we was trying to expand it, uh.
Okay, okay. The CRA that we've been talking about, the, uh, restoration area that, yes, we, we think probably the best thing to, we'd probably like to talk about that at the retreat. Because it's a pretty big, big.
Right.
Wide-reaching item.
Okay. Well, you know, I just want, you know, I knew we're coming in, new year, I would kind of want to get back.
Now, I have to answer, Mr. Hobbs, about two days' worth of questions from the media. Thank you.
I didn't want to put you on the side. I just kind of said we need to get back to.
Yes, yes, sir. We, we need to do that in the first quarter of this year, make decisions about that. Yes, sir.
Civility Committee, Mr. Johnson.
No court.
Committee of the Alphons. Public Safety, Mr. Johnson. Anything we need, Mr. Silver?
Nothing.
If not, fellas, Mr. Lawson.
All in favor? And Al Biffes?
Yes, sir. We have one amendment, uh, one, one additional resolution, rather a housekeeping resolution for consideration this evening. It's a resolution to authorize a restatement to the unclassified employee's retirement plan to.
plan, to authorize the mayor to execute documents relating to the unclassified employee's retirement plan trust and related instruments, to authorize and ratify plan amendments, and to authorize the mayor and director of finance to pay budgeted amounts into the plan. It'll take a unanimous consent.
I move. Second. Move, second. All the favor?
I'm going to discuss it. I'm going to, I'm going to, now that it's up, I'll, I'll discuss it. We have, this is a project that Mr. Smith, Mr. Hobbs worked on last year with Mr. Hamilton and his law partner. We have a basic resolution, the title which I just read, and then further, it'll be resolved to City Council, the City of Alexandria, that a restatement of the City of Alexandria Unclassified Employees Retirement Trust is authorized, together with the Retirement Plan Trust and amendments to the City of Alexandria Unclassified Employees Retirement Plan, and the mayor is authorized to execute such instruments as he deems necessary and proper. Be it further resolved, the City of Alexandria Unclassified Employee Retirement Plan shall continue to enforce as amended, and the mayor and the director of finance are hereby authorized to contribute to the plan for the account of each eligible participant, an amount of money equal to the normal contribution as described in RS eleven colon thirty thirteen point B and C, which the city would have been required to contribute for the participants to the statutory plan on behalf of those employees, commensurate to any annual, any basic annual limitation provided by statute of regulation into the plan document as amended, period. These are housekeeping, we looked at the plan, there's some updates that the Internal Revenue Code required. Mr. Smith, Mr. Hobbs worked on this, and we've been asked to, to implement these changes. It takes a resolution because the council has to authorize the changes.
I'll make a motion. All the favor? Both. Any other business?
I was talking, we did number eighteen, consider final adoption, authorizing the mayor to accept the low bid submitted for electric, electric main and painting. We never did, if we had to vote to reject that, it was in the writing under that, we don't have to do that. The manuscript, the situation, actually rejected.
I made the motion to reject.
Made the motion to reject.
Oh, you did. You wrote it on the original motion. I'm telling you, isn't that that tape, you, she had to consider final adoption, she didn't write it.
But you said as rejected, she said as rejected.
Yeah.
It's rejected, every kind of reject.
Number eighteen.
Yeah, but that, that was rejected, we advertised too. Number thirty was the one we said rejection and re-advertising.
Check eight ten, magnets painting, painting. It was, it was a motion to reject and re-advertise.
Look, you read the original motion, then they said about rejection.
See, we did that.
I read the item the way it was listed on the agenda, and then-
Well, you did thirty-three.
No, we just, the word, you need to do a resolution.
Myron, Myron, can you move to start the meeting over?
I said reject, re-advertise. Yes, see, she read the, I mean, and then she-
You read the original.
Yes, you read the original.
But then at the end, she came back and said reject and re-advertise.
Out of abundance of caution, should we make a motion, a resolution to clarify item nineteen?
Mr. trying to hide a special meeting.
I understand that.
Do you need, do we need to do a resolution?
I think, out of an abundance of caution, I make a motion for a resolution to reject number nineteen.
We've, Mr. Smith, we both have the case.
Why don't we, we have a motion, a little bit-
It's number eighteen. It's eighteen. It's eighteen.
Chuck, you got the wrong number.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, I was rejecting the wrong thing. All the favor?
You better get out of here.
Both, I think, most of the adjournments, I think we just did that deal on Jackson Street.